At this time, we will break from our schedule for presentations and move to new business. Letter D, consider a motion to authorize advertisement of the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance submitted by Provco Pineville. Mr. Savona, step down for a second. Mr. McHugh will come up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, members of council. Matthew McHugh, special counsel for the borough on behalf of for this particular project. As you may be aware, a application for a zoning text amendment was filed by Provco Pineville Fayette LP. And before you this evening is consideration of authorization to advertise that proposed zoning ordinance amendment for a public hearing on November 15th at 7:00 PM in this room. A copy of the proposed ordinance, which proposes to amend the RO district to permit certain additional uses, along with special regulations for those uses, was provided to you, along with a draft of a proposed legal notice for that public hearing on November 15th. The proposed amendment has been reviewed by both the Borough Planning Commission and the Montgomery Planning Commission. Before you this evening is simply consideration of whether you as a council wish to hold a public hearing to consider the merits of that ordinance. A vote to authorize advertisement is not necessarily a vote in favor of adopting the ordinance. Simply said, if authorized, council is going to have a hold a public hearing, which will duly be advertised by law to consider the ordinance in its current form with public comment and things of that nature before you on that date. So if council has any questions regarding the proposed ordinance, we can take it at this time. Otherwise, a motion would be in order to that effect.
We have a motion for what?
We need the motion first. If you want to have, if there's a motion to authorize advertisement, then we would proceed to public comment on the proposed motion.
I'll make the motion.
I got a motion. I have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Before we move to board comment, we'll allow for some public comment. I want to note initially that-
Do we have to boot them?
You go ahead, voting.
Not yet. So we'll do public comment. We'll allow the board to make comments and questions as well. And then, once public comment and board comment are complete, we'll call the question, and you can vote whether or not you wish to pass that motion. There is counsel for a group of the residents, Mr. Steve Pollak, who I think it would be appropriate to allow him to comment on the action before you this evening first. We're going to have Mr. Pollak come up and recognize him.
If you want me to sit, Mr. President, or? That's all right. Thank you. Council President Griffin, members of the council. It's funny, I've been in Conshohocken for 27 zoning hearings over two and a half years and a recent planning commission, but I don't think, I think this is the first time I've ever appeared in front of Borough Council with regard to the matter involving the Moore Motors facility site. So it's a, thank you for listening to me. I understand Mr. McHugh wants me to be sort of an opponent as opposed to you even hearing why you should hear it, you know? So you, having not heard why you should hear it, then hopefully you'll understand why you shouldn't hear it. But what we're, we understand everybody here, and everybody who's either for it or against it feels this is, they're here to try and get what they feel is the best for Conshohocken. And this is a very important parcel. It's the, it is a gateway to Conshohocken. It's a shame that Moore Motors wasn't able to continue as it has because it was one of those nice, unique little, you know, auto dealerships that I'm sure everybody has a relative, you know, who bought a car there at some point, some point in time, but times change. And what we are, what you are facing tonight, we believe, is a decision. You can either decide right now not to advertise, or you can decide to advertise and then, as Mr. McHugh says, have a public hearing and then still decide, make your ultimate decision. However, as I said before the plan, you know, Mr. McHugh pointed out that your planning commission voted three to one against it. The Montgomery County Planning Commission has authored, has voted against it and sent an opinion against it. Other speakers will get into the history, but some of you were on the Borough Council when this was discussed in 2012. But I can, I could bring out, and if you want me to, I'll bring it out. If you're not, if you have a public hearing, I will definitely show it to you. The plan hasn't changed. Nothing has changed in terms of, and I, what they are showing you in terms of, and maybe I have a packet, if I may approach. I don't know, Stephanie, if you're mad, if you want me to just go up and hand it out.
That's fine.
And where's Ross, you want to talk? I know Mr. Weiss is here on behalf of the Provco-
Let me just keep going.
So what you have is the very first, when you see it, I have three aerial views. And the first aerial view is from 2012. The second, which is when you first, when the Borough Council first considered an ordinance change, a text amendment. The second is the proposed, says proposed aerial view, and that is the proposed aerial view that was part of the 2013 and then 2014 through 27, 2016 zoning board hearing. And then, the larger ledger-sized sheet is the proposal that fits into the proposed text amendment. And I will venture that if you look at it, really about the only change is what's going along the front, whether there's a little sitting area where the monument sign is located. But other than that, nothing has really changed. It's still about this, it's still the same old convenience market with a certain size and weighs in and out and impacts on Augie DiMedio, who lives right next door, and goes all the way back to Harry Street, Lisa Rhodes, who lives across the street, Claire Dorsey, who lives right at 11th and Harry, and other people in the neighborhood. And so, what I, what we said in front of the planning commission, and what, since some of you were members at the time, we all stand on the shoulders of those who came before us. And we, and we are the stewards, and a little prayer at the beginning says that we're here, and your job, and it's a tough job to do what's best for the welfare of your constituents, what's best for the welfare of Conshohocken, the borough of Conshohocken. And in the past, it's been replete with everybody saying no. Along the line, Borough Council said no, back then the planning commission said no, back then Montgomery County Planning Commission said no. The zoning hearing board, after 27 hearings, with at least three, three and a half hour nights, hours of testimony each time, so we're probably somewhere in the 70 to 100-hour range of testimony with experts, came down and decided that there was no basis for a variance. They denied that, no basis for a special exception, because we weren't converting this into something that was previously there, and found that there was no challenge, validity challenge to the ordinance. Now, one of the things that I think we've learned, that, and as I said, you know, I've been here many times, but never in front of the Borough Council, was that maybe you don't realize what could be built here, and what could be done. We presented testimony of an art, an engineer who said the building could be saved, an architect who came up with this design that incorporates the main structure, gives us a convenience market, because if people want to market, they can have a market, but also provides for multifamily units. That's probably, we think, would be under the RO ordinance, something that could be built as a special exception, and so that therefore the ordinance would hold, and there would be no need to take something and really do radical surgery, because we can get into, and it might not, tonight might not be the night, because I don't know whether, you know, I have any, if we have any shot at convincing you not to at least hold a hearing. Because, as I said, they've had their hearing. They're the petulant child that you keep saying no to, but they don't take no for an answer, and they keep coming back to you until maybe they'll get you to say yes. And tonight's not the night to say, finally break down and say yes, when, as I said, in the past, it's not, you know, this isn't the first time this has been here, and it really is, you can see from the photos of the aerial view, it hasn't changed. But let me hand this out as to what was introduced at the zoning hearing, that are three sheets that we had. Julian Morales, who unfortunately I was, I wanted to let everybody know, Julian would be here to speak, but unfortunately Julian was hospitalized at Jefferson Hospital. He's doing okay, and he's fine, but, you know, don't read in that Julian isn't, Julian would be here, but unfortunately Julian just can't make it, and he just wanted me to let, let you know that on the record. But this was an artist rendering that we presented. After we presented, an engineer that said, this could be saved, this building could be saved. So if you see up front, if you wanted to have, if people want to have a market where their mother or grandmother or whatever can walk and get something convenient, you can have a market. You could have a nice little outdoor seating area. And then you could have the rest of the building going backwards to be a bridge with residential kind of, you know, conversion. So what we were, we presented an alternative that said that this is, this could be under a special exception. I didn't, I'm sorry, I guess I'm old school instead of putting it under the, under the microscope, although, because-
Can you put the one that's supposed to be sent to the-
Yeah.
The camera's in the bucket.
Oh, it's right above, okay. I got, I got camera shy last time, because I know during the zoning hearing, they, all they showed was my bald spots. So, and Chris used to, Chris Stettler would set it up for him. So there, there's the, the current plan. And so, what, what we're saying is that we, you know, you've been here before, it's been here before, we have, we were, we're, we're in front of the common police court in Norristown. Here we are in October. The decision of the zoning board was really last August. To get a case listed, somebody has to move it and get it, get it on the argument. I'm not going to do that because we won, and it's not getting built. But the applicant hasn't done anything to ever get it on the list. Finally, apparently, the zoning hearing board just this past week has filed a presi P, which is kind of something that those of us in land use, and I know I haven't never been in front of you, but I was chairman of the Lower Moreland Township Zoning Hearing Board, and my solicitor for that board was Ross Weiss. But, you know, they haven't done anything. If they were so confident that they could win that zoning, that case in front of court, they could have been through court, had a court decision, and already been, you know, ordered by a court to have this, to have it built. But here we are, we're here again, second time, and they're asking for a change in the ordinance and asking you to do a text amendment. I don't have, you know, look, I'm an outsider in the sense that I don't live here. After 27 trips here, I feel like I have visiting privileges, but, and I live in Lower Moreland, so it's in Huntington Valley, the other end of Montgomery County. What, what we have here is a situation where, this is a gem of a, of a, of a section of the, of the borough. And the RO district doesn't limit you to just using, you know, only for existing buildings. And during the course of the hearing, we also presented plans that showed that you could build as of right, and that we actually presented Mr. Berkowski, who was here earlier, to testify that he's ready to build these, this development. And what we were able to show at the, at the zoning board level was that there are, and I'll hand these up to the board, so I just want you to have a feel of flavor, because I know it's- Here's more of these. And here. What could be built here that would fit the RO district, and you wouldn't have to do radical surgery of allowing different kinds of uses and that are not already considered in the RO district? There's a single-family detached plan that was part of, that was drawn up by the applicant's attorney, applicant's engineer. Then there's a, we have a map that just shows you what's going on in the, in the RO district and all the, you know, little, you have existing buildings that have, some of them have been obviously converted to commercial on the first floor, but still have a residential component. And that's, that's, that's your, that's your neighborhood as you go from Ninth Street or Eighth Street up, up towards the end. If you think you're going to get rid of, you know, if you think a Wawa convenience store is going to maybe free up two locations where there are existing gas stations, maybe you'll have empty gas stations, but I know that there's been, there have been a couple times where I think it was the golf station or the other place that's vacant, that's more a repair place, there was attempts to try and buy that, and that, those deals have fallen through. So it's, it's, it's a process that you're, you're going to be facing with. But, I mean, I wish we could, I don't want to get into all the nitty-gritty details and everything like that, but we think that the zoning board hearing, if they, if they thought that they could win at the zoning board level, because I represent, and as interveners, two individuals, Lisa Rhodes, who lives right across the street on Fayette, and Claire Dorsey, who's here tonight. Lisa can't be here right now because her daughter's getting inducted into the National Honor Society, and I think that always takes higher priority over something like this. Family matters. And, and they are interveners that would have to say yes to a settlement, and they don't want to see this built. Lisa had, came and spoke eloquently about, with her daughter and the audience last time in front of the planning commission, about what example are we set, are, you know, are you setting when you've already said no several times, the plan hasn't changed, so what has changed? So that's the question, you know, that, that everybody has to ask. The one thing I wanted to hand you, which the one thing I love about a hearing that is the rules of evidence don't apply to, is that strangely enough, and at one time representing a methadone clinic, I came across an article done by, scholarly article done by doctors at the University of Maryland School of Medicine and Psychiatry, and the bottom line is, they found that methadone clinics are less a focus of crime than convenience stores. So I just want you to have the notion, and then again, I don't know if you missed it or if you saw it, but two nights ago, in a Wawa in Junianna, but in part of Philadelphia, it was on graphic video of one of the customers coming up to the teller at the, at the register counter, and he flung a hot cup of coffee at, at the attendant. So I'm not, I'm just saying, I, don't ask, don't listen to Pollak, you know? There is at least some, some basis that you have to think about, what are you trying to do by allowing this kind of a thing happen at the end of what should be the, one of the classic gateways to this municipality that has the potential, as you can see from what we've put in front of you with Brian Tracy as the architect, of, of something that could be done here, in this location, but instead of fixating on, on this builder and this developer and their specific plan. So are you calling, you know, there are, obviously, if you say yes tonight, we'll be back again, we'll try and lay this out a lot in a lot more coherent kind of presentation, and, and I will, we will be ready to present evidence. So I don't know if it'll be, I mean, I know it won't take 27 hearings, but it may not take one hearing for us to present this, because this is a very interesting and important kind of issue for, you know, the borough of Conshohocken as you, as you move forward, and what you want to say when you want to, you know, do you want to greet people with a super convenience Wawa? Because, you know, then one of the things was, back, it started out as a Wawa, then during the zoning hearing, it became just a generic convenience market, and it was denied that Wawa was even going to be involved. Now that we're back here again, on the, on the borough seeking a text amendment, it's no longer just, it's back, Wawa's back. It's no longer just a generic convenience market. So there has to be something to be said, why did they, why did they become all of a sudden a convenience market, generic, and stay away from the zoning board hearing? But now that they're back in front of you, asking you to exercise your will as a, as a political body to, you know, consider a text amendment? I don't know, that, I'll have to answer that one. But again, I know that a lot of these things will be brought out to you if you, if you give us a hearing, but there comes a time when it's not, if this was the first time ever in front of Conshohocken, sure, give them a hearing. But as I said, you stand on the shoulders of the giants that went before you. Some of you were those giants. Some of you were on the board at that time and did say no. What's changed? What's changed? I mean, is it, are we stuck with, is it because on the national level, you hear, you know, for seven years repeal and replace Obamacare, and so the thing that's changed is we have some new people in and maybe there's new control? I don't know, but what has changed? If you look at it from a land use planning perspective, and the fact that, I would think that everybody who's looked at this before for the borough, as I said, as I started out, we're all here trying to get what we think is best. What we think is the best way to greet people, what's the best way to carry on, what's going on at the very, at that end of Conshohocken borough, you know, where we converted buildings? I mean, talk about a conversion of a building, because we pointed this out during the zoning board hearing, there's no greater conversion of an existing building than this building. You got, you repurposed this into a borough hall. Why can't the Moore, the, you know, why can't the Moore Motors building be repurposed? It can be, but we don't have a, you don't have in front of you somebody who wants to do that. You don't have somebody who, and if you take the testimony, I could give, you know, maybe we'll put it in the record if we have a hearing, but the testimony of Mr. Tim Moore back then was, these guys were really the first, the biggest, the best offer that came around, and he never really listed it with a broker. So there was never a testing of the waters. This is, this is like, I mean, well, the record shows that, but here we are. So they're again, they're asking you for something that you've said no to. If your child asked you, after you kept saying no to them, you'd send that petulant child to the, to the corner for a timeout. So I say, vote, don't even give them the rights to a hearing, say no because you've been there before, and let no mean no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. Counsel, at this point, I think it would be appropriate to open this up to individual public comment, as we have done in the past regarding this application. We would recommend limiting the individual public comment to two minutes per person in order to allow all those that wish to speak to speak on this matter. There, I believe Brittany would be holding a stopwatch, so people will hear that two-minute time limit as they come up. We would ask that you not be duplicative or repetitive of anything that you have to say if it's already been stated or presented, but we ask you to move on to a new, fresh item. For those that wish to speak, we ask you to line up in front of the podium, state your name and your address, and then we'll allow your two minutes of public comment to begin. So is there anybody that wishes to speak?
Good evening. My name is Tony DeFazio, live 812 Fayette Street. And if I may, I'd like to make use of this-
You only got two minutes now.
Little prop. It won't take long. There's been a lot of history that Mr. Pollak highlighted, and we thought, it's going to be a little tough for everybody to say it, but for Borough Council's benefit, putting into context all the numbers that have occurred over five years. And we just wanted to point out that this is one plan, actually six years, by one developer. Montgomery County Planning Commission, as well as the Conshohocken Planning Commission, collectively, five times, said it was a bad idea. Zoning hearing board from 2013 to 2017, 27 zoning hearing meetings, one unanimous decision to reject. If you take all of this together, you have 19 no votes by borough officials. Only three thought it was a good idea, and you could argue those three individuals had a narrow interest in the outcome. Total of five collective noes from five municipal agencies. I'm not that great at math, but that's 100% rejection. So for the, the question is, I think, as Mr. Pollak alluded to, I want to ask Borough Council, what's changed? Why is the applicant back when there was so much public participation? And of course, this is a smaller venue than Washey's, and those of you that were on council at the Washey's meeting, when there were 150 people, sometimes 200 people, in the room at that time, over five years, that was a lot of public participation. We have no idea how many people actually participated in all of this, but I think, wanted to share this with you tonight because I think it creates perspective and context for what's come before tonight. So, you know, I'll make use of my two minutes and just ask counsel, what's different? What's changed? Can you address that?
I can address part of it. One of the things that everyone neglects when they discuss the Wawa is what this has cost the borough and the residents of the borough. So as of this date, the borough has spent on this to a quarter of a million dollars to reject a Wawa. When we look at it, for us to be responsible, this could continue for years in the appeal. So being responsible to our residents and the taxpayers, yes, looking at this is an option. So we looked at your, your petition, we went through your petition, we have respectfully listened to you all year, and we will continue to listen. Your, your signatures, when we went through it, 40% of them had to come off because they weren't legitimate, or they were on there four times or five times. So when we look at the amount of people that you're representing, it comes down to 0.05% of the borough. As for my residents, I, I understand completely, and this may be the only way that I can protect them, as to, is to listen to this. So that is one of the reasons why we are listening to this tonight. And we do respect your opinion. We also respect the opinion of the 8,500 residents that live here, and they don't seem to feel the same way.
Well, this petition that you guys put out, I know the gentleman that went in my ward and did three or four blocks on the sixth ward, Robert Stokely, okay? I've been in this town for 40 years, all right? It says here that the sixth ward, most of their signatures were from the sixth ward out of 554 signatures? That's not right. It's only 40, okay? And the gentleman that circulated this petition signed it seven times. Signed it seven times all through here. Be truthful with us. That's what changed. People change, and people, people, people don't want to be lied to. So I mean, I don't know what's going on here, but I have a lot of people telling me that this is what they want, and that's what I do for my residents. I've always been truthful in doing for my residents and what they want, that's what I give them. And this is not right. This is not right, this, how this happened.
Just, just with respect, Councilman Stokely, two things. One, these surveys are never perfect, right? They, they are out for the public and sign them. If one individual signs them multiple times, there's, there's no control over-
No, it's not, it's not, it's only two or three people signed it multiple times.
Right.
But the guy that signed it seven times, or six or seven, he's the guy that circulated the petition.
All right, I think in interest of keeping the process moving forward, Mr. DeFazio's had his two minutes-
I just have the right to talk for my residents in the sixth ward.
I do have one more thing to add, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
The other thing that you neglect and county revitalization neglects to inform the borough, the residents also is, yes, we are looking at this. And if, and if we vote no, that's great for all of you here, but for us, it is not. The appeal still goes on. It is not dead. We still have to go through the appeal, we still have to pay attorneys. It could take one month, it could take one year, it could take five years. Being responsible for the borough, it is our responsibility to look at it. Do we want to, do we want to actually have to spend another quarter of a million dollars of the taxpayers' money doing this? That is a question that we have to decide. We're responsible for that. It, it's not an easy decision. And for my residents, if I let it go to appeal and, and we lose, I can't protect them, I can't protect what kind of a Wawa comes in, I can't protect what kind of turn they get, I can't protect the setback. Will my residents thank me in three years when that happens, or will they say, why didn't she do something when she could? These are the things that we have to consider. We're not considering tonight, we're, we're discussing it. We have a lot of responsibility here, and we know that, and we do take it seriously. So that, that is the other answer to your question.
And I hope my-
And for my residents, if I let it go to appeal and, and we lose, I can't protect them. I can't protect what kind of a Wawa comes in. I can't protect what kind of turn they get. I can't protect the setback. Will my residents thank me in three years when that happens? Or will they say, why didn't she do something when she could? These are the things that we have to consider. We're not considering tonight, we're, we're discussing it. We have a lot of responsibility here, and we know that, and we do take it seriously. So that, that is the other answer to your question.
And I hope my residents take it serious tonight, and they hear me. If they want to contact me, email me, text me, call me on my cellphone, because let's, let's bring this out in the open and really find out what our residents want, okay? And that's what we need to do, not doing these petitions that, you know, it's, it doesn't make any sense doing it. And paying people to do it. You don't even have residents going around doing it that, that really want it. They're, they're paid. I hear they're paid to do these circulations, except the one guy.
As is Mr. DeFazio.
Yeah. As you are being paid also, correct? You're being paid for this also, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I'm a consultant.
Case closed.
But I also live here.
Case closed.
Okay. Thank you. Two minutes.
All right, thank you, Mr. DeFazio. We'll let it, if there's anybody else that wishes to make public comment, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Claire Dorsey. I live at 19 East 11th Avenue at the corner of, um, 11th and Harry. I've been involved in this matter for five years. I've been to all the hearings, all of the meetings, and I just want to let you know that, uh, my feelings against this project are even stronger than they were five years ago. This is not beneficial to me or my neighbors or the small business owners in Concha Hocken. A residential neighborhood is not a place for a 24-hour convenience store, for all the obvious reasons, traffic, noise, crime, trash, lighting, um, and I just want to know if, and I was one of the residents to go around and get signatures from my neighbors because I am very concerned. I went around myself and talked to my neighbors and got the signatures myself. And, um, I just want to let you know that if you are responsible or concerned about the residents and the small business owners of Concha Hocken, that you will deny this. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, Mary Tierney, 1016 Harry Street. Um, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I don't want to repeat everything that Claire said so well because she does, she said so eloquently, and I agree with all of her statements. I'm shocked that a possible reason for allowing this would be because of legal fees, when the reason the legal fees are so high is because a developer is trying to squeeze a property in where it doesn't belong. Um, this is not the fault of the residents that these expenses are high, that the legal fees have escalated to this, it's because despite, and the infographic was excellent for how many times there have been votes on this over and over again, and they keep persisting. And this, this is not a cause that anybody should, wants, I understand that, but at the same time, we can't be bullied by a developer who's not taking no for an answer. And beyond just this one property, and you know, my neighbors and I share the concerns about the noise that we're going to have, the extra traffic, crime risks, gas, all of that, 24 hours. Aside from all of that, what about other developers? Because this ordinance isn't just about that one property. You allow that, then what's to stop other developers from doing these side deals? And then what's going to go up and down Fayette Street? There might not be one lot this big, but you get somebody with enough money, like another potential Wawa, then they can buy two or three houses and squeeze something else there. So this is not just this one property that we have concerns about, although that is a paramount concern, it's also for the future of this neighborhood. I hope we don't have to bear needless, uh, legal fees. No, the taxpayers shouldn't have to do that, but that, you know, if it's incumbent on that to preserve the nature of this town and to prevent us from being bullied into property developments that don't fit with planning commissions, zoning plans, redevelopment, uh, goals that we've had, well, then that's an expense that has to be borne. And if there's any fault for it, it's not the residents, it's not a revitalization committee, it's not the consultant's fault, it's unfortunately developers' fault who chose to build a property when there were other alternatives. I know that people can sell properties or they can rent properties, but it doesn't mean that the new purchaser or the, um, the leaseholder can use it when it's not a conforming use. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Judy Smith, 117 West Fourth Avenue. I stand before you not as Judy Smith Appointed Planning Commissioner, but as Judy Smith resident and homeowner in Concha Hocken since February 2010. I have years of employment for a Fortune 6 company and know firsthand about compliance and regulations that are the foundation of industry and government. I've been watching and listening to the proceedings regarding the issue of the Profco development of the Moore property at 11th and Fayette since the first public hearings in 2012. In the five years since, I've attended the many meetings and heard the public debate on the issue because I'm a concerned citizen in this borough. I've listened carefully to people's statements, both for and against such a development. When I was asked to be a planning commissioner in 2015, I said yes, as I was eager to learn more about community development and the process of government in our town. I immediately read the current comprehensive plan written in 2006. This document spells out the vision set forth by our community for the future development of our town. Nowhere in that plan does it recommend the conversion of zoning laws of properties along Fayette Street to accommodate the building of a 24-hour gas station convenience store. Membership in our local Rotary Club has more than doubled in the past three years, with the majority of new members being people living in Concha Hocken. I belong to that Rotary Club. Many outside of our community look at our growth in amazement. Let's face it, young people want to move here, stay here, and give back to the community through service. What is it that is drawing young people to our town and to our Rotary Club? Everybody wants to know, what is our secret sauce? Since I moved here in 2010, we have seen shifts in the demographics. There are now more residents that are homeowners than renters. People want to move here and stay here. While only one square mile in area, Concha Hocken is a unique commu, community with a colorful history. Our town almost died in the 1960s when the only thing we were known for was the many gas stations along Fayette Street. Forward-thinking residents of this community back then put plans into motion to help turn that around. The forward momentum continues to this day, and what you see before you now is a town that does not make its claim to fame with retail establishments such as The Gap, Bonefish Grill, Starbucks, or a Wawa on its main street. The energy of this town is with the young people starting new businesses, starting families, making their marks on society, and the energy is contagious. We want to keep this momentum going.
Ma'am, I'd ask that you conclude your remarks when you get a chance.
Um, I'd like to take Julian Raleigh's two minutes, if I may. I just have two more paragraphs to read.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna be extending time. Please just conclude your remarks.
Now, I do not have any personal bias against Wawa as a company, but the context is everything. For people who want bigger, uh, to frequent the bigger retailers, they have only to drive 10 minutes in either direction out of town to find them. Why do we want to change the zoning along Fayette Street and potentially open a Pandora's box of other developers wanting a piece of us? We want to continue to promote local businesses that are the soul of our community and contribute to our appeal.
Two minutes are up.
Don't you see, this is part of our secret sauce? I have a copy of this in its entirety that I could present to you if you would like to read it in full.
You certainly can.
Yes, you can.
The last two paragraphs are especially impactful, and I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to read them. I'm sorry my printer died, so I only have two paragraphs. So let them have them. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Next.
Hello all, my name's Mike Mastrieni. I am a local business owner at 100 West Third Ave, um, resident at 417 West Fifth, and the president of the Chamber of Commerce for this beautiful little borough we have. Members of borough council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. McHugh, Ms. Checo, um, we respectfully submitted a letter today based on our understanding and opposition of the amendment before you. To summarize those points, we continue to feel this overly commercial business will have a significant negative impact on local small business, as well as significant impact on the residential community, most especially in the R O district this proposed amendment seeks to change. It's also a complete opposite of the Concha Hocken Revitalization Plan, which was developed six years ago. More importantly, and I think this is the biggest piece of the issue here, is that this tax amendment not only deals with that property, but the entire R O district itself. And in that capacity, we feel that, and is noted in the letter from David Bertram, published the other day and submitted to you guys, um, is that this is an incredibly slippery slope for the borough to engage in with a commercial entity that can allow, then, the amendment to allow for changes so drastically different from what that entire area is completely set to do. Um, and then furthermore, highlight, you guys commissioned a comprehensive plan task force a couple months ago, which doesn't complete until March of next year. So for an entire district to be rezoned, to allow for this 24-hour gas station and convenience store to fit in this mold, before asking specific residents and business owners how they feel about the borough and where they see it going, seems way too early in advance of that decision and those answers. So, um, we respectfully ask you to think of those main points and make your decisions based on those. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Meg.
Hello, my name's Nicole Frost, 217 East Seventh Avenue. Um, I share the feelings of everyone that has stepped up before me. Um, previously, the gentleman talked about a letter from David Bertram, and I just, hopefully everyone has gotten to read it. It was to the mayor and the borough council. He said everything I think and could write eloquently about the property, the process the last, um, five to seven years. This is a pivotal point. We do have a secret sauce. People are dying or jealous to come and stay and live in Concha Hocken and, and own. It's a pivotal point. People have talked about people coming before you, um, current borough council. I just really stress to stick to the comprehensive plan. If we didn't have others, um, you know, zones that they could build in, um, I would totally be for it, however, stick to the comprehensive plan. You talked about being, um, responsible and everything. What happens, um, what happens if you don't, um, approve the advertisement of this? What are the, the risks on both sides? Does it just hop to zoning, or it gets, you know, goes straight to the appeal process?
It is in the appeal process.
So if...
It will stay in the appeal process.
So I guess if I...
And it could stay there for a long time.
So in case I missed the beginning and you went over this, it's, so this, this vote is to either advertise or not advertise.
Correct.
Right. The only thing before council right now is the advertisement of a public hearing to consider the proposed ordinance.
So what would be the risk if it, you, if the vote is majority no?
Then there wouldn't be a public hearing to consider the advertisement. They could reconsider at a later date if they want, but there would not be a public hearing scheduled at that time.
And then if it's approved to advertise, they would go through the whole process again.
We'd have a public hearing.
Groundhog Day.
It's a different process. Zoning Hearing Board is different than the borough council taking a legislative function and deciding whether to amend the zoning ordinance. They're two different legal perspectives.
Okay. Well, I would just say, please, please think about, um, this is a pivotal, um, piece of property. Um, we've had many, many, I've been a resident for almost 17 years, we've had very pivotal points in our timelines the last 30 years, um, and this is really going to change, um, not only the, the structure, the look of the borough, but also allowing anybody to come in and just use their money to change whatever they want, um, even though there's other areas that are zoned, um, that would be acceptable for this property. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Yeah, I got one, Tom. Robert Sylwinski from East Fifth. The easiest way to settle it is go up to Plymouth, to the new one they just built up there, okay? If people were for it, they put that in. Let me tell you, that is pure hell. Now, I've come down the hill to come home, that, the Concha Hocken Road, and there's an entrance there where cars could come out of the Wawa. They don't stop, they speed. Almost got hit five times already coming that way. I mean, it is a nightmare, and even the residents there that live in that street, they hate it. They said the noise, the carrying on all night, the, the blowing of horns, music, it says it for itself. You're talking about danger zone is what it is, that's all I say. That was the biggest mistake they ever made, and they're sorry, they did it, the residents up there now. Because I mean, really, it's, it's, it's dangerous, it really is. I think Concha Hocken should stay the way it is, where everybody's happy with what we have. We have good business people, we have a lot of good, nice businesses, and that lot could be turned into anything else. You know, it doesn't have to be that. There was, like, think of a lot of things it's turned into, but, you know. So I really think that we do not need in this town. I think that would be the biggest mistake we make.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, good evening. My name's Dave Broman. I am a, excuse me, attorney with the firm of High Schwartz in Norristown, and a resident of 204 East Ninth Street, Concha Hocken. I come to you with a little bit of experience because I'm an environmental and land use attorney, that's what I do for a living. And I wasn't going to get up here and talk, um, until Ms. Leonard, you spoke. And unfortunately, I have to, because you can't trade money for the quality of life. I do encourage every council member to spend from 7:00 to 9:00 at the new Wawa on Ridge. Everything the former speaker said is true, it is a sheer disaster. When you leave at 7:00 in the morning for work like I do, and you come down to go left, to go right on Elm, it backs up to at least Fifth Street now. You can expect it to back up all the way to 12th, if there's a Wawa. Lastly, the article about drugs and alcohol and crime in convenience stores is real. I owned a deli for four years as an investor. I got out for that reason. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, Lisa Hibbert, 228 Spring Mill Avenue. I just have, I have some questions, it's not even, because I've been in and out of this, because I've been changing careers and things, so I've, I'm just trying to get caught up. If this is in an appeal process right now, and it stays in appeal process, can no one else buy that property?
No one has offered to buy the property.
Okay. I mean, I'm just wondering if the, the, and in this appeal process, if we, if you say no to no public hearing and we never hear about this again, in the appeal process, can someone else?
Borough council has no control over the sale of the property.
It's not our property.
I know it's not our, right, but it's, if you give up the borough giving comment on what it should look like and how, what kind of restrictions it should have and how it should look, if we let that all go, somewhere in an appeal process, somebody else can make that decision, right? If we don't, if we don't take control of it now, that's what I'm asking.
The borough can only act on what's before it. They have an application for a zoning ordinance amendment and land development plans before it.
Right, no, I mean, even in planning and in zoning. Right now, whatever's happening in, I'm trying to figure out what's happening in the appeal process. What's, what are they appealing?
There was a zoning hearing board decision that was, that they received a denial from the zoning hearing board that they've...
Right, so, and that's in Montgomery County now?
Montgomery County Court of Commerce.
So if Montgomery County gives them that, what happens after that?
The use would be permitted.
Right, but then do they have to go through planning and zoning again here, or do they bypass that because we said no?
No, they would just be filing land development plans at that point.
Right, so we lose all, if they get it at Montgomery County, we lose all control.
I can't predict what'll happen, and I can't predict what'll happen in this decision.
Okay, that's why, I just want everybody here to realize that. If we do nothing now, we lose all control. We get a big yellow building with a white goose on it, instead of telling them what we want now.
Correct.
That's all I want to say. I don't want a Wawa here, but I also am a control freak, and I hate those buildings. So if we don't tell them we want slate on it with, with lights that go off, tell them to close at 2:00, tell them we want the pumps in the back, you're going to lose all of that now. So that's all, that's all, I hate the idea of a Wawa, but I hate even more not controlling it.
All right.
So that, that's all, that's all I want to say. I don't want a Wawa.
I'm going to thank you for that. I think you clarified that better than I, I was trying.
I just wanted to clear that up, because I'm, I was confused with that, because I keep feeling like we're letting go of something, but I don't want the Wawa, but I also don't want a Wawa we don't have control of.
Correct, so that, that was my point, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Recognize Mr. Weiss is here, who's, uh, counsel for the applicant.
On behalf of my client, I'd like to thank you for your patience. I'd like to thank you for your willingness to consider our application. Land use is evolutionary, it's not static. There are a lot of things that have been said tonight, there are answers for these things, there are, the hearing that took place, and the allegations and the comments and the arguments that have been made to you are not accurate, but that was the zoning process. We're here now for consideration of an amendment to an ordinance to permit an additional use in that district. Not to rezone the district, not to rezone the borough, but to permit a use that would be limited to the R O district on a piece of property that is the largest property in the R O district, on a piece of property that without question... be limited to the R.O. district on a piece of property that is the largest property in the R.O. district. On a piece of property that without question, and I know Mr. Moore is here, is an absolute eyesore. And when people come in to your community, our community, I live in West Conshohocken, that's what they see. That's the first impression of Conshohocken, and it's time. And there's nothing wrong with, with the passage of time, with elected officials taking a different view. We're not here to try the case tonight. We're only here to ask and to hopefully thank you for having a hearing and scheduling a hearing. Another representative of the community said, what happens if you don't take advantage of this opportunity? Well, what happens is we continue with the court case, and the legal expenses are not the only issue. They're an issue, but the risk is that we win the case, and it wouldn't be the first time that an applicant went before a zoning hearing board, which is in the municipality, which is made up of the residents in the municipality, and was overturned when it got to the courthouse by a judge who doesn't live in the municipality, and will look at this a lot more objectively than perhaps it was looked at by your zoning hearing board. What will happen if that plan gets approved is there won't be the parking lot for the stadium, there won't be all the features that we've proposed to provide to the township, there won't be a convenience market for the benefit of your community, and we are not changing what is otherwise a residential community. This property is located across the street from a dry cleaning plant, it's located next door to a cemetery, and it's located adjacent to your stadiums and the A Field. It has residences without question, but it is not what you would consider a hardcore residential community. Our plan is very sensitive to those residents. You can't get on and off this property without restrictions on the impact on the residential community. I only ask, and on behalf of my client, thank you, and just ask that you schedule a hearing, have a full airing, see our presentation, hear from your own township consultants as to how the plan complies with your ordinances and all the steps that we have taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
We have another gentleman in the back. That's it. We finished it. That's it. All right.
My name is David Rose, ten thirteen Fayette Street. I've been to most of these hearings, probably 25 of them at least, and I've heard a lot of pros and cons, a lot of misrepresentations made by the proponent in his studies, no noise, no rats, no vermin, no lights, no traffic, no speeders, no left-hand turns. Now, I want to address one issue that's been tiptoed around. Why is this not spot zoning, which is patently illegal? Why is, everybody's tiptoed around that. You want to zone one, you want to allow use of five blocks. The only five blocks that can be used are big enough to allow this use. That is spot zoning. You're allowing that in the R.O. district, but it can only be put in one place. Why is that not spot zoning? Mr. Weiss has not addressed that. He's made some species constitutional claims in his, in the proposal originally, all these announcements that I got for the change, that that's the, they always fall back on constitutional claims on property rights. That's, that's the save-all. But I want to know why is this not spot zoning, which makes all you people liable? That's all I have to say.
Any more public comment? Okay. Can we have the vote now?
I, I think, if there's any board comment, I think that would be appropriate at this time, and then, once the board has had their chance to comment, I would ask that you call the vote for...
So if there is any, if there's not, then we'll call the vote.
I must see any board comment, so.
I can.
No.
Okay.
Actually, I just have, I have one question for Mr. Weiss. We had a constituent...
We've had some discussion now about the advantage of approving this now so that the borough would have more say as to certain aspects of the Wawa. My question to you, just for clarification purposes and not to go into particulars, but the one hard and fast, as far as Wawa's perspective, is that this would have to be 24/7 with gas pumps, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure I know that there was some discussion about perhaps changing the hours until 2:00 a.m. This would be 24/7 with gas pumps.
Yes, but we've proposed and put on the plan conditions that would limit when trucks could come to the site, conditions that would limit the lighting. We will fully comply with the borough's noise ordinance. We, we had an exhaustive study and a noise engineer, so we will be in full compliance with the borough's ordinances, including what has been put into this proposed ordinance to further limit this use anywhere in the R.O. district. The ordinance also requires that any property wanting to take advantage of this additional use would have to be at least 40,000 square feet, and that means almost an acre. And this property complies, but it's extremely unlikely that any of the, of the other properties would comply. It's possible, but it's unlikely.
Can I ask a question? I have one concern, Ron. Why does Wawa feel they need four Wawas within a mile and a half of each other?
There, to my knowledge, there's only two existing Wawas, the one in Plymouth to the right of the property and the one in West Conshohocken that I live above.
There is one on Butler?
Well, the one in, the one in Lafayette Hill is in Lafayette Hill.
Well, that's still within the distance, Ron. It's still in the distance.
This is, this is a...
Why do they need two gas stations?
You are, you are no longer, with all respect, a rural area. This is more urban than anything else. The Wawa convenience market that's being proposed here will have the additional feature for the benefit of you and your residents of being able to dispense gasoline. The gasoline stations that are on Fayette Street right now are old and antiquated of those that still remain open. This Wawa gasoline dispensing operation will be state-of-the-art with all the latest safety features. It will be safer than any other place to get gasoline. In addition, it is not a gasoline station that also does mechanical automobile repairs. It's a convenience store. I grew up in northeast Philadelphia. Every corner had a grocery store where you could go and pick things up as residents and walk to. That's what a Wawa convenience market will bring to the borough of Conshohocken.
But we have one on, out on Ridge Pike. I mean, it's close enough.
And that, and that may, that may be, but Wawa, Wawa or any convenience store operator would not be enthusiastic about this location if their analysis didn't satisfy them that there was a need for it and that it would succeed.
I suggest, I think a lot of the information you're going to hear, you're hearing from Mr. Weiss, I think would probably be presented by him, should Borough Council decide to hold a hearing on this ordinance.
We get to one, yeah.
Right.
[inaudible].[1796.03]